Okay, go ahead and start, we're ready.
Okay. Wendy, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Would you start the meeting, I've got a call from the Health Department.
Yes, sir, I will. Okay, we're gonna start the regular June 18, 2020 meeting with the call to order, and we'll start with the pledge allegiance.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone, Rick, would you like to open that second prayer?
Please bow your head with me. Well, Heavenly Father, tonight in these crazy, crazy times, once again mine ourselves asking for your grace and mercy. Some of us may simply be inconvenienced by all that's going on, while for others their very lives are for all who have contracted this virus, we pray for their care and healing. For those who are particularly vulnerable, we pray for their safety and protection. And for all who experience fear and anxiety, we pray for peace of mind and spirit. Our brothers and sisters around the world, we pray for shared solidarity. Our city leaders who have chosen, who we have chosen as our decision makers, we pray that you watch over their health and provide them wisdom, humility, courage, and guidance. And finally, Lord, as fear continues to grip our country, let us choose love. Now, although we may not at this moment be able to wrap our arms around each other, let us find comfort knowing that you're embraced, the embrace of God Almighty is forever with us. We ask this in your name, and...
Thanks.
Hey, just a second, guys. Do you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Alright, I'm trying to get you up on the screen, I can't seem to get that done.
We can hear you, let me get Peggy down there.
Yeah, you better get somebody down here to help this old ass man.
How about we go on to the public hearing part, Mayor, is that okay with you?
Yeah, but I want to give you something first.
We can hear you if you want to just tell it.
Okay, I just got a call from Rodriguez. And Corpus Christi had 52 cases and they're still counting them, so by the end of the day, it'll probably be more.
Okay.
Okay. Now, what do I do?
Let's go on with the public hearing, we'll open for public hearing for flat, 200683, lots 1A, 2A, 3A, I'm being reviewed.
Yeah.
Lot 61.
Thank you, Peggy.
Lot C, and the property location is 347 West Carter. Is there anybody here to speak on that? Say your name and address.
Bailey, 618 Avenue B, and can I just have a few seconds here? Traffic, traffic is a concern, that is an insane intersection, and I think that more traffic coming out of that area would be a problem. Can I keep my face in the citizen comments?
You may also speak during citizen comments.
Okay, so that's what I think should be considered, is the traffic at that spot will be a real issue. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Wendy, you go ahead, I'm gonna listen.
Okay, alright, we'll go on to item number four, which is citizen comments and reports. I have some that were mailed in, you want to start with those, or should we ask them if you want to come back?
Let's ask Lee to come back up and we'll read her.
We'll move on to one that we're having to already do this call.
Okay, I want to first of all thank the City Council and the Mayor and the staff for all their work on the affordable housing. I'm so delighted to see it moving ahead, I know it's not easy. We provide unaffordable housing for college students, but they're a pretty wild bunch, and so there's a lot of maintenance and pain and suffering and social interaction that we have to deal with. I want to also thank the City Council for protecting our health, safety, livelihoods, and quality of life from the multiple threats we're facing from industrialization. Please continue to defend us from the invasion by the Port of Corpus Christi. We are investigating ways to support the city in these efforts. We understand it's expensive, and we're trying to get that across to the public with the mailing that some of you may have received. Also, I want to mention Zoom meetings, you can see how difficult they are. I know I'm giving you guys a hard time about them, but it's not just, it's not just the city, it's not just planning and zoning. Our friends right now are at our house trying to deal with the Army Corps of Engineers and with the scoping meeting for the channel deepening project. The Army Corps of Engineers, what my friend Wavell said, as they screwed up another meeting, and these are supposed to be engineers, I hate to see what they do with the channel. So, those, we need to request, there are two more Zoom meetings scheduled by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, which has been handed over to the State Office of Administrative Hearing. This prohibits public comment. We've had two public officials from this board that have tried to cooperate, tried to participate in the Army Corps meetings, and it's been impossible. And this is a way that the Port of Corpus Christi has slid this in while everybody's on lockdown, pushing these permits, they don't even have their 55-foot dredges finished, and now they're pushing for 75 to 80 feet, while nobody can really participate in meetings and have their say. So there's two more of these stupid public meetings, Zoom meetings. One is June 30th, and one's July 9th. No public officials have spoken at the Army Corps one, and it's a pain in the ass, but we need to try. Also, I've already mentioned traffic at the landing, I'd like to welcome Casa Del Mar back. I hope they'll block those horrendous lights that are chining right into my house from the new public fishing pier at the city, at the county parks. I hope at Casa Del Mar they'll consider drainage and fire safety, they're right next to the dunes, and we want to make sure they have firewalls between all those attached units. Then the last thing, item A M, please remember to include funding for a review of the comprehensive plan and the city codes and ordinances with drainage density. And flexible unit developments are good. Neighborhood unit developments, planned unit developments, and cottage unit developments have not helped the local people get homes, those are failed to housing, and I hope they will be removed from the city's plan. Thank you very, very much, keep up the good work. Hi, Charles.
Okay. Alright, so I'll go ahead and read then the other ones that came in. This first one is from Captain Fulton, at 515 West Avenue C in Port Aransas. And her comments are with regarding to item K and item L, first with item K. She's concerned with speeding, and I'm reading from her email. "I would like for the council to consider decreasing speed limits throughout the town by five miles per hour. Specific areas I'm aware of constant speed violations are West Avenue C, West Avenue A, Carroll Road in Allison. The amount of congested traffic and parking issues has made it increasingly unsafe at the current speed limit. As much as it irks me, 25 miles per hour should be the speed limit in all residential areas with better enforcement, which is grossly lacking." This is for item L. "I think more than boom boxes and golf carts should be addressed. In my opinion, safety is now a serious issue, and sorry, there are just too many damn..." There are just too damn many. "Several businesses are running golf cart rentals as a secondary business and not going over safety procedures as thoroughly as valid golf cart rental businesses. Golf carts are now parked in every area of landscape and drainage digits. In fact, golf carts have sadly become the new landscape. A bar is renting golf carts, which seems to go against the whole 'don't drink and drive' motto. A cat needs to be enacted on golf cart..." Alright, the next one is from William Daley, and it is at his address, 618 Avenue B, Portland, Texas. And his, the topic item is Casa Del Mar condominium. And he has a comment that says, "This question is a little off-topic, but will the common walls of the proposed condominium have firewall separating the units?" We can't answer those.
I responded to them.
Oh, you did, or thank you did. Okay, Fran, I think that's the only two I saw.
There was one more I handed.
I know that was the only two we got in the email, was there a printout of one that I missed?
Yes, there was one that was...
Yep, okay. I think we got them all. Anybody else? Alright, so then we'll go on to item number five, which is our executive session. So the City Council will conduct a closed executive session in compliance with Section 551.071A, and we're going to consult with the City Attorney to seek advice on paying or compounding litigation, including not limited to case number 2019 CCB 61513-3, Port of Corpus Christi Authority of Voices, County Texas versus the City of Port Aransas. Section 551.072, deliberations about road property relating to the Public Facilities Corporation and portable housing. And Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations relating to the Public Facilities Corporation and portable housing. We will close.
Give me just a second.
Amanda Caracuas, spirit be with you.
End our closed executive session and reopen back into open session. Do you have any?
Man, Mayor President, I make the motion to approve the real estate contract filed between the city and the PSC, where the city can base small tract with your fair landing, the PSC and PSC can base a trade, it's a waiver and impact fee on the portable house project.
Okay, is there a second? Fran, hold the call, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor Personmore?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we're going to take a short five-minute break, and we'll be right back. Mayor, you want to pick it up on the consent agenda?
No, you're doing fine. Good training for you.
Alright, well, we'll go to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. After review, are there any things that anyone wants to pull from the consent agenda, or do I have a motion to approve?
He's supposed to read it first.
The City Council meeting minutes and ordinance, third and final reading, go into chapter two. Is there a second? Fran, call the call, please.
Mayor Personmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So we have number eight, items for consideration. D, the preliminary flat and final flat, 200683, the landing lots 1 through 3A, 1A through 3A, lot 1. Property location, 347 Carter Avenue, applicant 347 Carter LLC.
And council, this is the property adjacent to the library that's behind this building, Carter. They have been attempting for almost a year to get this thing replanted. A lot of technical errors from their... Finally, finally, it was successful in satisfying our city engineer review in the subdivision of the property documents that you see. It does consist of them constructing and dedicating a new public street, which will serve the back, the back lot of the subdivided, subdivided property. There are no development plans at this point, we've not seen any new projects, but obviously to develop that rear track in the most flexible way possible, it would have to front on a city public street. So, like I said, that's the most significant part, I think, of the replat is the construction of that. As with any plat, all those infrastructure and drainage utilities, infrastructure and the road would need to be constructed prior to any permitting of development and actually prior to recording of the class. So this one was presented to P and Z and approved, all recommendations. I have just a question here, just because I didn't know what this was. If you look at the, I'm not recording here, it says S E E N T A. And it says like a C equals point 02, and another one's point 03. What does that stand for? Some of those are drainage calculations. Okay, that's what I just didn't know what it was, because obviously they're going to build something here. And one of the other big issues, and we haven't seen it often, if you know the city provided a different drainage basin. So the master drainage plant has property, basically has property draining into those basins, kind of their basin. This one, because it's an older property, wasn't, it wasn't feasible to drain into the basin that it normally would have. And so one of the big issues that needed to be reconciled was coming up with an alternative drainage plan. And there was questions, if planning and zoning were that...
I can't hear anything at all.
Alright, how about? Can you hear him, hear?
Joan, one, two, three, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Just to recap real briefly, Joan, I was explaining that did you hear the part about the construction of the road, with this redevelopment or the subdivision? So the part of, part of the plan will require that they, they develop and they construct and dedicate a new city public road to access the rear lot. In addition to that, our city engineer reviewed their request for an alternative drainage plan, just to grade an alternative drainage basin than what the master drainage plan would have.
Join the meeting.
Unusual, but like I said, not inappropriate, and again,
Owen, maybe.
our city reviewing engineer.
Who comes up with the street name?
I think they're allowed to come up with it.
Are they? I mean, that's, that's normal, right, when you put up a sharp lane.
Unless it's offensive or inappropriate, or usually it's named after a cemetery or something, or some monument, or some foul, or something.
Is Ben trying to get into the call?
Motion to approve.
Ben's wait in the waiting room, I'm gonna...
Is there a second? I'll second. Alright, Fran, please call the roll.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Personmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon? Mayor Bu Yan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item A E is a doom permit, BFDP 200764, discuss and take action to confirm that the application submitted by the La Vista Owners Association, DBA Casa Del Mar Condominiums, for the construction of a two-level, three-unit condominium structure connected with common walls, common pool area, with a patio and two-car garage is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. Property location is 108 Dunes Drive.
And council, this property, again, is right off the land, handed down somewhat catty-corner from the new condominium. It's actually the rebuild, rebuilding of a structure previously there, however, they're reducing the number of units. But because of, just because of the proximity to a, what's a critical doom, although the vast majority of the properties, as I said, is a rebuild, it already flattened and not containing. There was one corner that we just felt was too close and too proximal to the critical doom, that we just didn't feel comfortable allowing it to go as a no-doom permit. And we walked the site a couple times with dealers, and they understood, and they agreed. It gives them the flexibility, among other buys, whether pool, with decking, and everything else. So that's why you see this. The rebuild will reduce another unit that they had previously, and it said it's this is simply the doom permit portion, we've not, we've not received the plans themselves, and now we'll go through the same process. But as they have outlined in this, is they are planning a two-level, three-unit complex. And Mr. Daley's comment, obviously not germane to this discussion, but you had to have firewall anyway, so. Everything would have to be current code, so I wasn't quite sure of the intent. If there was some underlying motive, I would have just preferred to ask outright, but to your point, no, I mean, everything has to follow code. And again, our fire marshal now doesn't really give a doubt, we're reviewing all these projects. So not only does our political official have the final authority, our fire marshal usually takes the lead in projects like this, like the great, along the fire code, so it'll have to be all code when it gets to that stage. This is simply the doom permit, a planning zoning approved, we recommend.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alright, a second, Fran, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Personmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon? Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, item number eight F is a resolution approving change order number four, McDonald Ballfield to Gorley Contracting, Inc. By adding additional fees in a total amount of $4,333. Authorizing future budget amendments for fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget, and authorizing city manager to sign all documents associated with said change order.
Where'd Ben go?
He's here.
Ben's right here.
So this change order at McDonald Ballfield is to strengthen up the dugouts, the two dugouts there to meet wind code, which I believe it's either 150 or 160 mile per hour winds, and that's what this change order is for.
I'm sorry, that's a question, and that is, isn't the stuff that we just passed in the consent agenda?
Thank you.
I had the same question.
If you had a case you were to hold it, we'd put them on one more time.
Thank you. Well, I was gonna say, so we carry insurance on this new softball field.
Correct.
We didn't do that in the past.
Yeah, we did insure the softball field, that's one, that's one way that we were proving the FEMA that even though it was on church property, it was the city's responsibility, because we have the insurance. Yes, we do.
It is to be nice.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Beth, Fran?
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Personmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right, item G is a presentation from Ross and Associates, and provides an update on hurricane repair. That Ben?
Yeah, it's Ben again. So, in the typical form, format, I'm going to talk about the construction that's going on in Port Aransas, and then work through the design and what we're communicating with FEMA, and working with them, and then the funding. To start with the construction, Roberts Point Park, we are 85% complete. We're working on the small pavilion, the roof there, the observation tower, and finalizing the bulkhead and the walkway. There's been a couple delays that are extending out the project, but we're anticipating the project to be completed by August 1st. The Chamber Commerce Building is coming up quickly, as everyone can see, and we're 60% complete to date, and we are anticipating that completion to be done by August 31st. And Jerry McDonald Ballfield, we are right now at 65% completion, and we're anticipating that project to be done no later than the end of August. Moving on to the design, what we have going on in the design side, the fire station, we are, we have 30% design submitted by Janak Architects. We're sitting down, the fire station and EMS facility, and we're sitting down with Mr. McIntosh and Mr. Shanklin tomorrow, actually, to go over the design and continue moving forward with that. The public safety building, as we mentioned in the last council meeting, we are actively working through our appeal process for the correct square footage and cost to build a new public safety building, that appeal. FEMA and our team are communicating frequently, multiple times a week, to resolve our issues, to keep continuing to communicate our stances, and we're continuing to move forward there. With the Public Works Garage, we have 65% design submitted by Turner Ramirez. And tomorrow, we are, we're sitting down with Mr. Parsons, Doug Turner, to, to review the design on our side. The gas system, we're at 95%. Mitch and his, his team, the department there, have finished the review. Urban Engineering has those final comments, so we're just working on really crossing the Ts, dotting the Is to get this project out on the street advertising, and we're anticipating that, that advertising should be happening in July. And the pier projects, Robert Points Park Pier, Ansel Brundrett Pier, Charlie's pasture pier, those projects, we received last week, 95% design from Urban Engineering. At this point, it's in FEMA's hands to do their EHP review, environmental review, and we're working through that, making sure that we're all on the same page, so we can get this project out on the street and get these piers back here in Port Aransas. And the last one, major project we have in design right now is the temporary bulkhead over at Charlie's pasture bulkhead, and that project is at 50% design, and we're aggressively trying to get this project 100% to, to close up the breach there at the bulkhead. So those are the major design projects we have right now. Lastly, the funding, this month, since the last time that we talked, the city of Port Aransas has received $720,000. And we have $1.2 million right now that we're working through with FEMA and the state to, for the city to receive payments on that. And our standing total to date of money that the city has received and reimbursed back from this, our Hurry, Kane Harvey Recovery is right at $19.4 million. So that, that's the updates here from the broadest team, unless there's any questions? Right now, we have the recovery... Right now, we have the recovery here at Port Aransas estimated at $115 million.
And a big piece, a big piece of this is, of this money is the gas system.
And we're working, we still are working through FEMA's inquiries on the projects and getting those answers so that we can free up that money. And that also includes, you got the fire station, the public safety building, the Department of Public Works, so.
The designers are working together to, for it all to become a uniform, the new buildings that we're building?
Look or design?
Yes, we are, we're, they're working together. We have Janak Architects, they're doing the public safety building, they're doing the fire station, and with the fire station building, the Department of Public Works, since, you know, they're basically right next to each other, Turner Ramirez and Janak have been working together and communicating, so we make sure that the aesthetics, they blend, they, they fit well together, you know, and blend architecturally together. Along with, you know, along with the architects are working with us, really hard to, to put together responses, to communicate with FEMA, our justification for what the city deserves for these facilities.
Ben, do you feel like, once some of these projects are in the design phase and are ready for bidding, that that might move FEMA along on approval of some of them?
I do. I, I think we are, with the high-pressure line gas system, I, I feel, I can't guarantee anything to FEMA because they always, they, they always find a new question to ask, which is frustrating, but I feel that we're at a good point with them to get that project moving along so that soon we can get that project in construction. And with the fire station and the public safety building, we're at a place, unfortunately, but also fortunately, we're at a place in arbitration with FEMA where it's getting to a point where they can no longer just keep asking questions, and they need to make decisions, and the people, you know, the people that can make decisions are coming more and more to the plate to be part of the discussion, because in many ways they're forced to. So I, I feel that when we have these things ready to design, we can, we can quickly get them on the street so that we don't have our fire station operating out of tents, we don't have, you know, the police force operating out of temporary mobile facilities. So we're pushing hard, and we're crossing our fingers, but I think, I think we're on the right path.
I may not say this correctly, but so in reference to our main concerns, it was always the changing of adjusters, or we, how are we in that process, or with the people we're working with now? Do you guys have a good feeling with the people you're working with now, or has COVID obviously affected all this?
COVID's affected a little bit, but I think FEMA's, you know, I think there's been some efficiencies in response with them. When we're in our arbitration, arbitration, and our response is it goes up to, it goes up four or five ladders for review, so I feel that we are working on the FEMA side with people that have more experience, they, they realize that they're on a deadline finally, and we're gonna get answers. I mean, the changing of the guard over on the FEMA side happens way too often, I can't guarantee that piece, but whomever's there, they have to make a decision soon. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it's kind of really the dynamic that we have, because we have this stuff in appeal process with the fire station, public safety building.
Do you think we're gonna have to add these to?
I'm, I'm sorry, you caught out? What was the question again?
Do you think we're gonna get some projects funded, it's gonna be appeal process?
Yes, we, we will have, we will know the money we have to work with, I'm confident in our position, and there will, this process is probably going to expedite us having money to do these projects. And in this, in this process, this, these appeal processes, there's windows, there's a, I said 60 days, I misquoted it last time, but there's a, there's a 90-day window where FEMA has to, they have to make their decisions on their first appeal, and then, you know, we get, we get another 30 to 60-day window if we need to, to take it to the next level, but hopefully we don't have to do that.
Fran?
Yes, sir.
I'm getting some calls that they're not getting the live streaming, something wrong with them.
It says it's live on YouTube. It might be delayed.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Ben?
Good job.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, we'll make this item H, resolution adopting the second amendment to the 2020 fee schedule adopted January 16, 2020, by amending the parks and recreation swimming pool fees, adding new fees for pool passes, and providing and severance, and providing for severance and setting effective date.
Yeah, colleague couldn't be, today, but this just simply kind of reflects a more simplified approach to the access to the pool. It wasn't in there, but this'll, like I said, there's so many people that are using it so frequently at the time and effort, which is just a good idea, probably long overdue, so it just simply reflects a pool pass, as the name implies.
Do we think that, I mean, it looks like, I don't know, with Ben's long time use of the pool, is this an increase, rate increase, and is it gonna change in effect usage?
We think actually the increase, because the, the normal fees, like three bucks, you can get in, so like I said, for our, our frequent flyers, this is just a more efficient way, it's like more to make up in volume. And, and when you look at the man, are people taking in, handling the money on each individual visit? I know, there's, there's a, there's a cost associated with that, too. And it's never been a for-profit pool, but it's just, you know, sometimes you have where you raise, raise so high, it's covered, no one's using it, so.
Once, once the whistleblower kind of left a few years ago, the use increased the black dramatics.
Okay. Okay, a motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, thanks, Shannon. Fran, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Burton Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan?
Mayor?
Mayor?
You're muted.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. The item I, appointment to boards and commissions, discuss and take action to appoint board members to the nature preserve advisory board.
Yeah, yeah, if you look at this, it's, I believe it's two members, and they both want to get back on.
Three.
Three, seeking all three, seeking reappointment.
And then nobody knew, so it's just a yes, right? For automatic.
Yeah.
Motion to approve that one.
Okay, a motion to approve. Rosario Martinez, Jase Tunnel, and Kathleen Swans. All right, is there a second? Beth, all right. Fran, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Mayor Burton Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan? Yes. Motion carried.
All right, item J, appointment to boards and commissions, discuss and take action to board members to the board of adjustment and appeals.
Same kind of thing that previous, we had two that that's for people reappointment, we still have an open seat, so please, if you know of, you know, but please ask, please consider serving on these boards and commissions.
Are you looking for just one or two, because it says by six alternate is also open?
We need another alternate.
We did, and we can re-advertise for next month.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Motion to approve all of them.
Okay. Is there a second?
Councilmember Holt, second.
Oh, good.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan? Got it.
Mayor?
I think he's saying yes. I see, yes.
Yes.
Item J, appointment to boards and commissions, discuss and take action to board members to the board of adjustment and appeals.
Same kind of thing that previous, we had two that that's for people reappointment, we still have an open seat, so please, if you know of, you know, but please ask, please consider serving on these boards and commissions.
Are you looking for just one or two, because it says by six alternate is also open?
We need another alternate.
We did, and we can re-advertise for next month.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Motion to approve all of them.
Okay. Is there a second?
Councilmember Holt, second.
Oh, good.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Burton Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Yan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item K, present and general discussion on speeding throughout the city.
Mayor, did you want to push this until?
Push it later, I don't want to discuss, I'm getting statistics on it now.
Okay, all right, we're gonna table that.
Till July?
Yes.
Okay. Item L, presentation and general discussion and possible action on stereo systems on golf carts. But not cars.
I, I think, I'll wait.
I just read what it says, golf carts.
Mayor, you want to jump in on this?
Not really, but a lot of citizens do.
Well, why don't you tell us what you're hearing? I mean, other than, we didn't.
I'm hearing that the, the music from golf carts and cars are much too loud, they violate our noise ordinances.
My, my question to that is, isn't that an enforcement issue, not a new regulation issue?
Well, I think it just says present in this general discuss, I don't know that anybody's presenting.
But I'm just saying, like, it's not like we need a warrant saying golf carts have stereo, it's just, if there's a decibel level that, because I agree, it shouldn't just be golf carts, it should be, you know, any kind of vehicle that has a loud stereo, because I've seen lots of cars won't buy those boom stereos, and some people on bikes that have a big boombox on it as well, so.
Yeah.
And so it just seems like it's not a, we need a warrant, but we need to enforce existing ordinances of noise.
Council, I, I don't want to go, Lieutenant Stokes, I'm not, I'm not, we had a brief conversation, but I think, I think it's deeper, I think part of the issue is, and again, I thought.
Rick, you need to come up front.
Rick, you're gonna need to come up front, because Joan and Mayor can't hear you.
Lieutenant Stokes and I had a conversation about it, we certainly know the issue, you know, you drive by, you hear, but you're right, it's not just carts, it's cars, we have a girl on a bicycle, who remain unnamed, that has, it's loud of a stereo system, but I've never had in any of my college forms. So I think the problem may be more far-reaching, and, and one option may just be that we revisit the whole sound ordinance. We have overlay zone, we have, you know, well, I, I mean, because it's just, it's, it's, it is an enforcement nightmare, because you have a cart that maybe, right, that maybe, maybe blasting music loud to somebody as they pass by, but they do pass by very quickly, and like, any of us have been, with our windows rolled down or anything else, the occupants, in some instances may, but in a lot of instances probably don't know the volume, and then it becomes a quantifiable number, you know, it, the way our ordinance reads now, it's complaint-driven, so if somebody has to complain, it's hard enough catching carts on the road and on the sidewalk, by the time the complaint reaches PD, I listen to the calls, they're long gone, they turned off, you know, very rarely you get to the ones that are reported. So it's just, I get the issue, but it's just pretty difficult. Even the ones where it's a fixed building, again, has to, like, you know, have to do that, they got to go out and actually measure. So it's, I don't have, we don't have a solution, and I hate coming up here, you know, without, without a solution, other than right now, with everything else going on, that, that would be probably the best option, which we don't have time for, but just we needed the whole thing. Like, yeah, because some of the way the ordinance reads, it's quantifiable with decibels, the other part of the sound nuisance refers to unreasonable, of a volume that's, would disturb somebody with reasonable sensibilities, so. Wouldn't it be creepy, but I guess my question is like, you know, and, and I understand that, you know, that the, the, the past nature of a vehicle riding down the road, you know, yes, it annoys you for a second, but it's like, if someone has a whistle on their muffler, or a car without a muffler, and driving down like everywhere they go, it seems like if this happens, they, police officer has to see them, where someone says, you know, this car, or this car, or whoever's making a lot of noise, to me, I actually, on one side is, I hear golf carts, every time they start, they backfire, and then drive off, so it's like, you know, first you use gunshot, but you realize, no, it's just a car, and those are just as noisy as well, so I don't know, I don't know exclusionist, other than, I guess, other than, other than it remain complaint-driven, and, you know, again, more than likely, it's gonna fall on PD, because it'll be out for hours, and they'll have, it's like a car on the highway, they'll have to respond, they bite it, probably compliance is gonna be achieved by simply saying, tone it down a bit. Well, I do know, just like a long time ago, when one company did do that about stereo in their car, that cities did have like a, you know, police officer had a decibel meter in his car, and, you know, he's driving down there, boom, 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 you know, from the car dropping by, they just blow the meter, right to a, 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 a citation for excessive noise, and, you know, maybe that's, they, the car driving by, and you can hear. But right now, the way our ordinance reads, it's complaint-driven, so there has to be a complaint filed, for them to respond to. Yeah. Well, definitely, definitely, I guess, we can look at this, and I do feel a lot of stuff has gone in August, September, it won't be much of an issue, but. It, but it's. It's recurring. It's, and it's difficult, and it extends beyond, like I said, just golf carts, because where you go, like, mufflers, you know, automobiles, you know, trucks, jeeps. We'll do what you want, though.
What is there to do?
Hang on, first.
What do you, you have any suggestions?
I, I personally think it's an enforcement issue, but I don't, you know, maybe we give the police officers a decibel meter, say that, like a broken taillight, or whatever, if they hear, you know, a vehicle making noise when they drive by or pull out, they can issue a citation.
I just feel like our police force has so many bigger issues going on.
I agree.
Where we have 100,000 people visiting.
I mean, they want everybody, they want, yeah, I mean, they receive problems, you know, people are placed on the beach to keep things, you know, on golf carts on 361, you know, person may have to be enforcing masks, people wearing masks, it just, it's like we want them to do a million things, and we have, what, 15, 20 police officers, and they can be everywhere.
About three of them crawling out.
Yes.
Maybe we do some publicizing of this, and try to get people to be aware of it, and see if maybe they would turn it down themselves.
Also perception, so as long as you advertise that Port Aransas is laid back, but be long, people tend to take that approach, whereas in the summer, we tend to advertise more of a fun, exciting, kind of atmosphere, so I think it will fade as the summer fades, and kind of go back to that when it's technical.
I got, I got an idea, just.
Hey, David, would you check Shannon's mic, it's not working.
I can see this.
You can barely hear.
Maybe get a little bit closer.
I got, I got a, I got a, something, why don't we re, let all the golf cart rental places know that there is a sound ordinance, and golf carts that are excessive will be ticketed if, whatever.
It's subject to the same sound ordinance?
Yeah, but just, just reminding that, that, you know, any, any golf cart allows stereo will, and that way, they can, they can at least let their customers know, and then that's at least will do it, or if they provide a cart with sound, their customers are, are subject to citation if it's.
Level.
Exactly. You got it, that's easy, easy, it's a start.
Easy option.
It's a start.
I just like driving golf carts down 361, you know, CDC compliance.
Actually, it's a good time, mid-summer is a good time to just do a reminder. We usually do that anyway, all the rules again. And that now is the new one.
And hopefully common sense keeps in, people you love.
Good idea.
I don't care what we do, I can't hear it anyhow. You guys decide, there's just citizen complaints about it.
I think we, we generate a letter to the body and just say, hey, guys, you know, your business, if you guys want to keep it up, you guys need to manage yourselves. And the more radical and crazy carts get, the more they're, they're potentially, you know, ruining it for themselves.
Yeah, of course, us indirectly.
It's always limited after 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM.
Yeah.
No golf carts on the road.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you get a lot stricter.
Yeah.
Then they need to self-regulate and equal.
That would really change the dynamic around town if you said the golf carts have a purpose.
Yeah, no, no after dark.
Well, that's what I was curious, is the accidents that were, you know.
There is a solution to a lot of problems, I'm very hesitant to say it, because it's going to make a lot of people unhappy. And that is if there's a golf cart on 361 driving down there on a sidewalk, you know, there's like ten people, but the vehicle automatically gets impounded, it goes right back to the rental agency.
It does.
And the deal is, if, I mean, I think, but if they just, any golf cart found, automatically gets impounded. You don't have to write people a ticket, the golf cart goes away. And then the people who rented have to go deal with it at the golf cart agency or whatever. You're going to have a lot of issues disappear. But that's going to be, we're going to need to have a city with a golf cart tow truck, because that's going to be running 24/7.
And the issue there, it's a great idea, officer is going to be out of commission for all that time. Or he's got to stay with that, got to stay with that cart, so.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying that's the thing, I'm saying that is, that is a, that is a solution.
Well, I mean, if it costs money to police, then you charge annual fees for the license fee. So just to be accordance, I'll set the cost.
Well, that's just the highest of issues to that officer.
No, well, many, many.
I think the problem.
The code enforcement person.
Well, I think the problem is that it's, there's not a people during the summer and there's two during the winter. I mean, come out and enforce people, you know, it's an issue for four or five months of the year. I don't know, I don't know if that was the solution.
We'll start off, we'll start off with the rules letter and I'll add a cover page. It speaks directly to their need to self-regulate or, or risk us stepping in with regulations that they may not approve.
Sounds good.
It's down, I mean, I know a lot of the golf cart places are doing their part, telling these tourists and they don't care. They consider it, it's a small town and because the majority of the golf cart companies are going out and saying, these are the rules, you cannot drive on the perp road, you know.
They would have been like Travis, they would rent boats and then working people boats off the narrows or areas that were dangerous. They had GPS and you paid a deposit. And if your GPS showed that you went into those areas, lost your deposit. They put it back on the company as their responsibility, there was no police involved. Something similar could be approached with golf cart companies. GPS nowadays are very expensive, you can map it from iPhone. So if they were seen riding on 361, they lose their deposit. I think that works for everybody and it takes.
Does the city get the deposit then? No, the golf cart.
Split it.
Split it.
No, the thing is, you would have to pass some type of ordinance so that all golf cart companies require GPS to make up their.
Oh, they must have that stuff, because I've heard now, a lot of places, rental units work from, are actually supplying golf carts with rental. Are you, you, any of the places doing that?
Oh, yeah.
Because that's, that's another issue and that's, I'm also finding a lot of them, those are, it's not necessarily carts from an entity that are spread agency, but a lot of people do just come down, run a place, oh, we've got a golf cart and no one's explaining the rules.
Remember, we have stickers on them, all of them have those stickers.
I know, but.
And they still don't know how to.
I have, I have a big sign on it, so the rest are, people, first they walk in the door and say, he works out.
When you hit you on their pocket, they send you to pay more attention.
I think too, is back to the music and the noise ordinance. I don't know which golf cart companies have radios and stereos and which don't. But I think the ones, or the, from what I've seen, the golf carts that have the super big fancy stereos are not coming from the golf cart company. They're coming from they, some who have come to you. I mean, you know, I mean, seriously, they're coming from the people who privately own a cart and it may not even be a cart that states in poranzas, maybe it's their cart from their, you know, own lake Travis or wherever they live and they've souped it up and it's a $25,000 golf cart with a $5,000 stereo. So that may be, I mean, so yes, I think telling the golf cart companies, you know, reinforce of the rules is smart, but.
We may miss that.
We maybe miss the actual perpetrators because there are people who privately own carts, right? Just like the individual who has the bike with, I mean, that's his own ride, you know?
At least it's the start, you know, and like, we're not going to get, you know, we're not going to get every offender, we're not going to get every person. Probably you can call a cart on 361, you know, you put a blue foil over your GPS sender and you can go anywhere you want. So there are ways around it, but just, we're not going to get everybody, but you get, you know, at least we're getting it out there that, you know, there's, there's going to be some, some limitation.
You think that'll help the complaint you've been receiving, Mayor?
He's muted.
He's talking, but he's unmuted.
Muted.
You're muted, Mayor. I tried to and he.
Mayor, you're muted!
Or maybe you're just not talking.
No, that's all I get is complaints, so it's, it's nothing new to me.
Okay, so even if we try some things, you probably still get complaints, in other words?
Well, I think the police officers, when they hear it, they ought to enforce it, they ought to pull them over and ticket them.
Okay, so Lieutenant Stokes. Okay, any more discussion on golf cart stereo systems? Right, item M, Discuss and take possible action on rescheduling the date for the council goals workshop for budgeting purposes.
I'm here. Say something, perfect. Can I suggest that we go back to the community center this summer to do it? So that we can all space out and all go be at the same meeting with a lot of space between us? What do you think?
Can we not be spaced in here if it's just us?
We can spread out.
Not right now, where would you be?
Well, we could set up a giant.
I won't be next to you, I promise.
Joe, we could set up a big square in here.
Yeah, tables.
Because the audio is so much better in here.
But then we'll have people there, I mean, is there enough room for everybody to be separated?
We could have our department directors call in, maybe, and just do counseling here and.
Thank you, come one at a time.
Or one at a time, or call in, we can, we'll figure something out.
Because I would like to be there in person. This is not a very good solution because I can't really understand most of what people are saying because they're not really speaking out. And, you know, I really think it's important to interact, but I have to have space.
We want everybody there.
And we're not giving you a lot of money this budget year, so.
And we, we have to have it open to the public.
It always is, but usually you only get like two, four, six people, you get the same people.
Well, I want to be sure, Joan and the mayor.
But we can, we can spread out in here and then we'll call in our, our city staff, just department by department. We'll make it work. Let's figure out a date.
Is there, maybe inside there?
Is there a problem with original date of July 1st or what's?
Shannon has the, Shannon has a complaint. Supposed to be Wednesday, July 1st.
It was supposed to be in two weeks, basically in two weeks. So now, what, are you out that whole week, Shannon?
July, I'm not July 1st. So I can back up to the 29th or 30th, or I can come late, because I'm the newbie. So if it's a matter of me being gone or someone else, I'm usually.
Can't do it all.
Well, we, we don't, we can't do it like though because of how we have to.
I didn't understand how long she's out. Shannon?
I don't have a sub for the month of July, COVID has called her to other offices. So I can, I'm available to 29th or 30th, or.
What, are you off work?
That's what I'm saying, or I can come late and if I really forget to.
You can't deliver mail, not at 1:00 time.
Life is okay for me.
See, my wish is to make everybody that is senior who has been here available to do this thing and let me kind of run in when I'm done, if that's what we need to do. I'm okay with that, I just wanted to clarify.
And I appreciate you wanting to do that, but, but I also don't want you to do that. It's very important for you to learn, I mean, you got, you know, you.
You're out, who's out the 30th?
Yeah, I'm out the 30th.
Who's out the 29th?
I'm good with the 29th.
I'm out 29th.
Mayor's out the 29th.
What's that? Mayor, are you out the 29th?
Yeah.
Yes. Darla.
How about Darla speaking up on this?
Well, I don't think, I'm here, I don't think I can attend in person till probably the week of the 6th.
Well, it's important for you to be here.
Yeah, and she's like, we need her more than me.
But she can be there, no, I mean, we definitely need her, but she can be there on, you can, Darla, you can attend the 29th or the 30th on Zoom, correct?
Could be able to.
Let me ask you this, what, what if we did a, like noon to 5?
You didn't reduce it five hours?
Yeah.
I never go on that quick.
No, we started at 9 and finished at 3 or 3:30 or 4.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I mean, what about Wednesday, July 8? You know, you might be an hour late, but. Who's, who's saying no?
I'm, I'm, I'm out of town.
You're out of town?
Yeah.
Uh, how about, how about the 7th?
The 7th, I'm leaving town on the 7th and I won't be back.
How about the 6th?
Good.
Joan, how about the 6th?
Right.
So, okay, back up, if we're going to do it from 12 to 5, why can't we just keep it on the 1st? And, and that, and that works.
When does Darla, Darla, when do you come back?
Um, to get the packet ready, it's going to be tough. I don't see me back in Corpus till the 29th. And we have to have the packet out Friday to 26th if it's on the 1st.
Yeah, that's the problem with Darla. Darla, are you back July 6th?
Yes, I anticipate probably getting back to Corpus the 29th or 30th.
Okay, what about July 6th and we do one, we shoot at, you know, 1, noon or 1?
And then just work till whenever we finish, whether it's 6 or 7.
I'm not, I'm not at 5 in the middle of the.
July 6th is a Monday after a holiday, which is double.
I think that's also, that's also the, the three-day meeting for, for July.
They're not a three-day weekend, 4th of July.
What about?
Yeah, but that's usually. Yeah, whatever, whatever y'all do, I would work, I'm at 5 though, I got it.
Well, the 3rd, are we off that Friday?
Why can't we leave it just on the 1st?
Yeah, Friday.
Because of Darla, she's, she's in Houston.
Darla, what's the deadlines that we need to have their goals workshop for?
Well, we've got to get it done early enough.
Yeah, I mean, Darla's got to be there to take this finance.
Well. Probably by like the 16th, I mean, we've got to have the budget done by probably the 30th to get it to 4.
But remember, the workshop is where we propose ideas and then the staff goes back and puts prices to. We don't want to push that all the way back to the 13th and then two days to.
Oh, no, but we have till the 30th to get the budget done.
July 30th.
Right.
Right.
So what's wrong with the 6th?
Shannon works a double.
That's bad.
Well, what if we go, what if we go back to July 1st and we do 1 o'clock?
So apparently, we're not, we're not here the first week of July, no one's here. So what, when Darla, when, when Darla, when do we have, what's our deadlines for when you're going to be here? When we have the meeting and when this is all due? I heard you, but.
I said I'll probably back in Corpus the 29th so we could get a packet out that week for a meeting around the 6th. But if it has to go for a meeting on the 1st, somebody else will just have to get it all together.
Okay, yeah, all right, so Wendy, when do you return?
On, on the 12th. I can do it the 13th.
How about the 13th or 14th at noon? Joan, how about the 13th and 14th at noon? Charles?
Hello?
Yeah, 13th or 14th at noon.
Can, can we shoot for maybe the 13th?
Yeah, let's shoot for the 13th.
Darla, does that sound good, the 13th?
It's good for me. And that would give me enough time.
Okay, 13th at noon, everyone pencil it in.
No, I have to be out of here by 5.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, we'll get it.
Oh, at noon? At noon, that's what we said.
I can schedule the 14th in case we need to come back the following day or two days in the morning.
My problem doesn't have anybody, but I got to.
Twice arms.
Okay, so that's it.
So it'll either be the 13th or 14th.
Yeah, well, we're going to start with the 13th though. All right.
13th, July 1.
Yeah.
Okay. When is our deadline to submit suggestions, ideas, things that we might want to just at least have on the agenda for the goal project workshop? Now that we're down to 13th of July. Darla?
I'm looking at the calendar, I closed it, hold on. July 13th, I would say you would need them in by the 2nd.
Oh, boy.
Gives you two weeks.
You have an old one, Shannon, that maybe you can look at, to kind of get an idea? Who could you?
If not, I have my own. If you just, if you suffer insomnia, definitely.
Oh, yeah, no, I've been, lots of these big bucks and I think I'll follow them.
Are we going to request president's separation?
We requested them and we don't get, we don't get a package.
Just a question, I know Leslie probably provides it, but just recenter ideas, is that kind of a, is that something we can post on the thing? Or is that kind of a dead, dead horse?
Let's not discuss it now, I think if you guys want to bring it up, we'll entertain.
What, what did you say?
The rec center concept.
Oh, okay.
I mean, just for discussion, let's throw that thing.
Yeah. Okay, anything on that? Charles, Joan?
Good.
No.
You what?
No, just want, any other discussion on the, on the goals workshop?
No, I don't have any.
All right, so number nine, and then staff reports. Who wants to go first? Darla?
I'm having problems pulling the reports up, but David and I discussed the sales tax because it was still down from what I'm remembering by memory, about 31%. But if you realize what we collect in June is actually for April. So I don't think that's cause for alarm right now because we didn't have anything going on in April, but basically IGA and whatever manufacturing might be on Harbor Island. So I still think by as busy as we are, we're going to be okay.
Well, I just, this is, I, I mentioned that to Dave, but I wasn't really looking at the April numbers. I was looking at basically like the last six months, seemed like the revenue has been down. Well, I, this, this, um, I, I mentioned that to Dave, but I wasn't really looking at the April numbers, I was looking at basically like the last six months, seemed like the revenue has been down in general and it looks like it's close to key numbers. I didn't know if that was before or after Gulf Copper started paying sales tax.
Um, I think the problem was a release of inventory at January 1st for property tax purposes probably. And they were just getting geared back up in the last few months.
I, I really think, you know, when you go back and look at the numbers, the Gulf Copper 2019 numbers were so off the chart ridiculous that it's really skewing.
It is.
Everything really hard. It's, it's really hard to tell because, you know, 17 was hurricane, 18 we recovered a little bit, there's all kinds of building going on, but it's super hard to determine what was sales, what was related to sales tax, what was, what was, what was, uh.
Inventory coming in.
Can we do like an EIS tax search and, and, and just see if we can see like, because you, if you look at my EIS number, it'll have like a tax breakdown of what that, that percentage of taxes, it seems like there's gonna be higher in there.
It's not open record, so you can't tell what individual merchants do.
No, but it, it would be by category and you can look up like industrial and it seems like we could at least get a rough idea, a rough idea of what, what they're.
I think you're the man for that task, Bruce.
I, I think bottom line, it doesn't matter where it came from, it's gonna be down, regardless of whether it's Covid or whether it's not coming in over there. So I think that's what we need to be prepared for is, I mean, you know, if, if, if you just look at it on the annualized basis, like you said, we're gonna be down. No matter what, and so that's what we're gonna have to look at when the budget is, you know, how much is that number and how will it affect?
So right, but I mean, it's like, it's like, it's like a double edged sword. It's like when we get a ton of money, it's like, wow, you know, that's a new ambulance or that's another police officer, but when it's gone, I'll tell you like crud, that they're gonna be a police officer.
Yeah, and I.
An ambulance is not gonna come in next year.
And Bruce, I, I agree, I think, and, and I'll take the blame for that, I think I put too much emphasis on last year's sales tax, I think it was, there's some, it was artificially really high, and I think we need to tone that down this budget cycle. And really analyze our numbers better and not use that, those 2019 highs, because I think they were just, I think it was an anomaly, we shouldn't have based as much as we did on those.
Yep.
Well, we'll know more next month for sure.
Yes, we will. Looks like I know that IGA strikes and Gulf Copper pays tax, sales tax.
All right, anything beach parking permits related, any other budget items, sales tax, op tax?
No, not really, we're blowing and going on golf carts and, and beach permits.
What about the golf cart?
We had to get more from Corpus today, so.
Our, our signs have definitely helped.
I, I would like to say something, uh, when we donated the bags for the month of May, um, every car that would come through, we were wearing yellow vests and they thought that we were there to solve each parking passes, so it kind of worked to our benefit. But I would say about one out of every third car that came through, we would direct them to bronze. I would be interested to see how much more revenue we got just from telling where, where to go versus having no one there and just getting through.
I have, I have noticed the, um, the mobile guy's been out a bunch, I've been doing a lot of beach cruises and I see him quite a bit.
I think they're doing a good job.
Oh, yeah.
If you, if you've been down to the beach, we've put up these four by eight foot signs, beach parking permit required $500 fine, and he said that that got their attention. And he says they are, people are hunting them down for their beach parking.
Texas Sonic Express here locally is now doing those air banners, you know, that air can go through, they look like a netting kind and you can print on them. I was thinking with the, is it, it's called ballers, right?
Ballards?
Ballards, to have like pick up your trash, you know, like white and red letters or beach permit, I don't know, just for the summer, but to remind people to get their permit and pick up their trash, but they're really cool health banners. I know.
Yeah.
And to wrap them, you know, where the cars are coming in.
How, how has the, uh, okay, well, I don't know, is appropriate time for that because we're still on financing, but how has the beach cleaning process been with the amount of people that is?
I mean, we, uh, it, it's better, it's, um, we got waylaid last week with that, with that high water bend.
Sure.
It was a disaster, but, uh, we've got a lot of temps and it's, it's going good. It, it takes us, it takes us about a day and a half to get it under control, but by the time we roll back in on Monday and they hit it really hard Monday, they just about got it by midday Tuesday, it's looking great.
Do they pick up trash daily?
Yes, they're picking up, we, the, the guys are doing trash Saturdays and Sundays. Yeah, you, you can't not.
Oh, I know. Lots of trash. Okay.
Thank you, Darla.
Thank you, Darla.
Do you have a hug?
No problem.
I was just thinking about.
Getting you back.
Well, he can hear you, so you just said hi to him.
Love you, Bear.
Love you guys too, thanks for all the prayers.
You got prayers.
Thanks, guys.
Prayer for day.
Awesome, thanks.
All right, good night, you guys.
Hey, Officer Stokes, are you still over there?
I am.
Would you like to come to the podium, sir?
I guess if I have to.
You do, you have to speak into the microphone, so Joan and Charles can hear you and YouTube.
And the public.
Public on YouTube.
Okay, uh, it's been an interesting few months that, that we've been going through, but we're starting to see an uptick in our, in our activity, um, as you can see from the 2019 numbers to the year to date so far. Memorial Day was a butt kicker, but we've got to do it and we're getting ready for 4th of July. I think traffic and the amount of people on the island during the big holidays is probably the biggest thing that we've done on this, on this monthly report. Is there anything specific or any questions you guys have or concerns?
The park being restricted and probably the area, what, what's, are you moved to those? Yeah, a lot, 67.
Uh, just parking like along the Dune Line or in front of the Red Ballards or something like that is, is usually what the, just depending on what it was, Memorial Day weekend, if you guys went down there, we had three people on the Ballards and they were starting on the, on the Dune side, so it's. Parking approach in the roadway and cut it down, so we were. Know what we could do.
I was gonna have something in place before, so I would kind of keep them like signage or anything, so it's not part.
On the Dune side, we're, we've, we've got some temporary, no parking signs, we're, have to work with Parks and Rec and some of those guys to help try to get them out. I don't know what those, does it look like this?
Yeah, we'll be able to get them out.
Why, why is that so prevalent? Because I've noticed that too this year, more than any, they, they're all, they're all parked on the Dune line, and I know it's more crowded where the, down on the pier, the surfers are, you know, whatever, but I've never noticed it to be that bad. Is it just because we have so many people?
So many people.
There is so many.
Yeah, there's so many day trippers, it's probably.
Clearly there are.
It's like every Saturday is a, is a 4th of July weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Monday and Tuesday down on the beach is like the normal summer beach.
Yeah, yesterday's beach drive, I was just like, and Tuesdays, it's just like.
I was taking traffic this morning, uh, when it was raining, because I didn't move, uh, afraid, but, but, I mean, it was, it was like Saturday, you was down past almost the one you think.
Yeah, and, and they are, you know, south of Cinnamon Shore used to be no man's land, not anymore, it's, it'll be bumper to, it's bumper to bumper on, on a weekend, and it, it, it's even crowded on a Tuesday. I used to just go down to Cinnamon Shore and just turn around because there was, it wasn't worth driving the last mile, now I go all the way down to 62 because it's almost built.
But don't you, I mean, I've heard people say from Corpus, like they'll start at like Ball Hall, you know, from Corpus, because that's where they normally go, and then now it's too crowded, so they'll keep going, you know, north and like, I mean, it never stops, there's, there's no break anymore.
No break.
We've gone numerous again where we just continuously go, and then ended up, because it was pretty the whole way, it never stopped.
Guys. All right, the health department's calling.
Okay. Um, just because it was, we did, we had tabled it, but, um, it seems like there's been a lot of complaints about speeding. I have seen, I'm assuming that's through mostly 11th Street and some other parks, and I have seen the officers working, uh, uh, 361, I'm assuming that's in most of the golf parks and not so much speeding. Are you seeing an issue of, of more speeding or are we seeing more tickets? Is that kind of a, this like just because of the crazy people in here, does everybody's in a rush or?
I think there's a couple of layers that go into, especially on 11th Street, 11th Street's 35 mile an hour zone, so, and it's usually inundated with all parks, so people aren't used to driving 35, and when you do have the opportunity to drive the speed limit or even slightly over it. At 40, it seems like you're really going fast, you're going by over, um, it, it's kind of one thing that I think is, is kind of, is, is part of the complaint driven, um, as far as writing tickets and, you know, making a stop. Covid-19 has kind of put a damper on some of that stuff. We're trying to protect our guys as best we can to, to limit some of the contacts, uh, just because, I mean, sheer numbers, we'd be out there all day long. And with the amount of people that we have, dealing with them on the beach is bad enough as opposed to try to put them, you know, making a lot of different traffic stops, so we're trying to limit the amount of stops that they're making right now. But they, they are still making stops, or we're just trying, we're just trying to limit their exposure as best we can. But I mean, that, that's part of the reason why, uh, tickets and stuff are down for, for this year, especially some parks. What we do, we are doing, we are doing a modified version of our, our staff stuff, we got with David a couple of weeks ago, uh, for targeted enforcement and the golf parks on the highway is, is the one operation that we're gonna, we're gonna keep doing this summer. We usually do speed. During the summer, we usually do speed, golf cart enforcement and beach park enforcement, uh, as an overtime job, but with the budget being the way it is, we're trying to limit our overtime as best we can, and we still have 4th of July and Labor Day coming up, so we're, we decided that the best practice and policy is to do the golf cart and very.
Now, do the personal side, and I know that the state generally already sent it down for, for big major weekends, but, uh, as we thought about, I don't know why, you know, just have to turn very, but maybe inviting some, going to, maybe bringing some DPS down.
Sure.
Maybe help with that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we, we normally call for, uh, for DPS to see if they have any assets that they can, can send us to help with, you know, work in traffic on the highway and stuff like that. Fourth of July, we also partner with, uh, Parks and Wildlife because they help patrol the, the ship channel during the fireworks display and stuff like that, so we, we might even be able to get a couple awards to help use and patrol, like they do during.
We're also using, we use the DPS to support moving steam and it takes some heat off of the, the lower cops and people who are regulars who live in town and get more love, like, oh, this is the right.
Yeah, I, I get it, but.
Now, I'm trying to say, but if we take heat off our local guys and have y'all, give y'all pretty much to spend more time on the beach or, you know, whatever, and maybe turn some of those trees, ones that were, you know, DPS, why not?
Yeah, we're, we're, uh, we reached out to the captain, uh, already, I don't know what his numbers are gonna be, I don't know if he'll be able to stand, because unlike spring break, 4th of July is, everybody's doing it, so they, they're, they kind of spread their assets out a little bit. I know we take a bunch of details from, from our region that went up Austin with the protests and the demonstrations and stuff, so. I don't know what kind of numbers he's got, but we'll, we'll, they'll send us something, they always do.
And maybe controlling the lakes up there too, I hear the lakes are just busy at the beach.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Any water, I don't know, do you work with waters, crazy?
As soon as, as soon as the governor said, yep, you can travel. That's all they heard, they didn't hear anything else and then fourth period.
It's that way everywhere.
Yep.
Anything else I can do? I don't think so.
Stay safe.
Okay, I think that brings us to item number 10, city council comments and items for future consideration. Anybody have anything, Joan?
No, I don't at the moment. I think we're gonna have a lot of stuff when we get to the summer, the special meeting about the budget, so.
Right. Uh, Dave, anything?
Um, we got, uh, so the Marlin, Marlin Summer Camp kicks off.
Yay.
Kicks off, uh, this is mine, I get double action already. Kicks off Monday, so Colin gets back Monday and they're all ready, they got a good team hired, they got some Covid, special Covid people working, so we're looking forward to kick, kick off camp, so it's moving.
I'm so happy that.
I know.
Yeah.
It's in pencil in, um, pencil in July 30th for, um, and right now it's tentative, but that's gonna be our groundbreaking for the apartments. And I think what we're looking at is like a 2:00 PM groundbreaking, gonna be a lot of people, and then moving back to the Civic Center and Palladium Port Aransas PFC, we're gonna put up, you know, just, you know, display, uh, easels with boards and, and invite the whole community in to check it out. Check out the drawings and the, uh, the elevation drawings and, and all the, all the architect stuff that they have.
And you said the land piece closes Monday?
It all closes together.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the deal, I, I, how many documents have I signed in the last?
So many, hundreds of papers.
But it's happening, it's, it's there. Yeah, so.
Uh, July 30th, is that what you said?
What's that, Joan?
You say July 30th?
Yeah, July 30th, I think it's, uh, Thursday. Yeah, we're looking at 2:00 PM, that might, that might change a little bit though, so.
You'll send something out.
Oh, yeah, 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 we'll send it all out.
That'd be great, that's exciting stuff.
And, uh.
In the Golden Show.
Don't know what the weather's doing this weekend, still showing some clouds, but it doesn't matter.
They'll still come.
So we're working hard on the beach, parks are looking good, um, trying to get the streets we brought a little bit more.
Mosquito man's been coming around.
Yeah, good, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we, we've been getting out, we're actually buying a second, um, a second sprayer, so we're gonna have two trucks pretty soon. Because we want to shift back, we were having to spray a little bit too early in the, in the, at 4:30, and you really should, you really shouldn't start till about 6:30, because that's when they start flying. And you, and spraying two hours in front of that bit is, wasn't really doing any good, so to push it back two hours instead of spraying until 2:00 in the morning, because it takes, it takes about, it's a, it's about a six hour to, to eight hour gig. Driving every single street, driveway, alley in the city, and that's what they do, it's a long night. Yeah. I know, anyway, that's all, that's all we got, so, uh.
Okay.
Thank you all. Meeting's dirty.
Thank y'all.
Bye, Joan.
Bye, Joan.
Bye, Joan.
Bye.
Bye.